Check your watch, counselor, I won't be leaving. There you go. Close enough. It is seven o'clock and time to begin our February 8th, 2010 County Commission Meeting. Call to order, the Williams County Board of County Commissioners like to ask if you would at this time stand for our invocation, Commissioner Tommy Little will lead us in our invocation. And Commissioner Walton, if you would, please lead us in our pledge to flag.
My father, thank you for letting us be able to come here together to deliberate and to fellowship. We asked you to be with us to help us in our deliberations to make us a better county, be with all the leaders of the state and the nation. We asked you to be with our men and women who are in harm's way overseas, to bring them back to their loved ones safely. We appreciate everything they do for us and our country. Again, we thank you for all our many wonderful blessings and the blessings on this county. In thy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be seated, please. Thank you very much. This time, Ms. Anderson, if you would, we'll have a roll call. If you're present, press the white button, records your attendance tonight.
I have twenty-two present, two absent. Commissioner Greer and Commissioner Cheryl Wilson, absent.
So we're missing Commissioner Greer, Commissioner Wilson. I know Commissioner Wilson is out of town, so we'll be operating without them tonight. Also, I would encourage each of you, we fortunately have a very short agenda tonight. The roads are getting whiter and slicker as we go, so we'll make every effort to get out as soon as we can tonight. Take care of our business, but I don't anticipate that we'll take that long to do that, but we'll be here to do that. First item on the agenda are the approval of minutes of the regular January 11th, 2010 County Commission Meeting. I'll entertain a motion if we accept those. Commissioner Chauvin, Commissioner Davis II, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Thank you very much. Each of you received the Highway Commission minutes in the mail. I'll entertain a motion to accept those. Commissioner Mills II, Commissioner Hayes to approve the Highway Commission minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show that unanimous as well. Under our citizens' communications tonight, we have one young lady that signed up representing a group from Page High School FFA. And I've spoken to Rachel, and she has some of her friends with her. They want to make just a quick report to our body tonight. And Rachel, at this time, if you would, bring your colleagues with you up to the microphone and introduce them, and then we'll give you your minutes to talk to the commission.
Okay, well, thank you for having us here tonight. I'm Rachel Thompson.
Move on up closer to that mic so we can hear you, okay?
Okay, sorry. This is Megan Whitefield, Caitlin Carrington, and Lucas Mendel. These are my teammates on our Agriculture Issues Contest.
Rachel, stop just a minute. I'm not sure that mic is on Rogers. Would you check that, please?
Did it switch down on your screen?
Rachel, we do this to everyone who speaks. Roger, you're getting both your paper right there.
Mr. Chairman, I think that they can handle it.
Okay, all right, okay. Okay, just if you would, Rachel, just talk as loud as you can.
I'll try. Well, anyways, as I was saying earlier, we have our Team Agriculture Issues, and we're going to stay convention in March, at the end of March, and we are doing an issue on the diversity in agriculture. And we have a problem where we only have one minority in agriculture education within Williamson County. And so we are doing our presentation on that, which we would present to you all tonight, but within the limited time period we have, we can only give you a summary of it, in which it just includes on how we're going to try and get more minorities within our FFA group within Williamson County, which we have ideas such as reflecting on their own FFA organizations, which was called NFA, or just teaching them the, I can't think of the word, the benefit of being in agriculture education and what it will do for y'all. And so, thank y'all for having us here tonight, and that's just what we got so far. And if you don't mind contacting us if you have any opinions or anything you'd like to say to our agriculture teacher, Miss Jessica Hartley at jesseh1@wcs.edu. And can we get record, record that we were here, please?
Absolutely. As nobody can hear you, I, on behalf of the commission, I will send you a certification tomorrow from all the twenty-two of us that are here tonight certifying that you have been here, and we'll sign off on that as chairman of the County Commission. So certainly, I want to thank you for being here. And tell us, I know you've got some friends there with us, tell us who they are.
Oh, well, as I said earlier, this is Megan Whitefield, Caitlin Carrington, and Lucas Mendel. This is only a few of our team. We have others who was not able to make it tonight for personal reasons, but these people tripped it out through the snow, come out here.
We thank you for being here tonight to represent your group. If you'd like to, the four of you, come on up in the well here in front of the commission bench, and the teacher, come on up if you'd like to make some photographs of them while you're here. That way you can have a record that you were here and...
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
These students might not want to go back to school tomorrow if they don't introduce their teacher.
Well, after she makes the photograph, tell us who you are and the role that you're in there with this program.
My name is Jessie Hartley. I was just coming into this role as the FFA advisor and new agriculture teacher at Page High School. I'm actually from Sumter County, but I've moved here, so I'm now a proud Williamson County resident. So thank you for listening to my students. They've been working very, very hard.
Well, thank you for being here tonight. Congratulations. Thank you, Commissioner Lynch, for setting this up, because I know they had been in contact with you, and it's great to have them here tonight to see the program and see what's going on. Under Communications and Messages, I would like to share with the body, we have three late-file resolutions tonight. Resolution 210-8, which will be a resolution that we will add without objection as a late-file resolution, 210-8. This is amending the Highway Department budget to buy salt, and we may need it before the night's over. Any objection to hearing that resolution tonight is late filed? I see none. Resolution 210-7, resolution authorizing the appropriation amendment in the Williamson County Highway Department budget by $500,000 for improvements to Clovercroft Road and the intersection of Clovercroft and Oxford-Glynn Drive. Any objection on that one? I see no objection. And then we have late-file resolution 210-10, resolution appropriating and amending the 2009 Emergency Communications Budget by $8,000 and authorizing the county mayor to purchase property from the state of Tennessee. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Any objection to hearing that resolution tonight? I see none. And then we have one more late filed, late-file resolution number 210-9, resolution to permit the serving of alcoholic beverages at the Agricultural Exposition Center for an event of the Nashville Kennel Club. Any objection? I see none. We'll add that to the bottom of the agenda. Each of you have been given a corrected revised Page Two of the agenda, so if you would, we'll be following the revised Page Two. The front side of the agenda remains the same, so certainly we will follow that this evening. Moving on, Communications and Messages, a proclamation from Commissioner Judy Hayes and Mayor Rogers Anderson, please.
While he's sitting, the mic up, the proclamation that we have here tonight is declaring March 1st through the 31st of May as the Great American Cleanup in Williamson County. If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'll let Judy do that.
Sounds like it's on, let's see here. No? Okay, there we go. We're live and we've got some audio.
Very good.
Thank you.
Whereas Keep Williamson Beautiful, KWB, mission is to partner with volunteers to keep our community clean, green, and environmentally aware. And whereas Keep Williamson Beautiful is celebrating its 10th anniversary of participation in Keep America Beautiful, KAB, Great American Cleanup, which takes place from March 1 through May 31st each year. And whereas the Great American Cleanup is a platform for the wide range of initiatives embraced by KAB's mission, such as litter cleanups, litter prevention education, recycling drives, graffiti removal, beautification, and community improvement projects, park renewals, clothes collection programs, and water stream cleanups. Whereas the caring citizens and volunteers of Williamson County, Tennessee are committed and proud to do their part to sustain and improve the quality of life in Williamson County. Working together to clean and beautify our county helps build pride in communities, create cleaner environments, foster economic development, and change the behavior that causes litter. Now therefore, it be resolved that Rogers Anderson, Mayor of Williamson County, hereby proclaims March 1, 2010 through May 31st, 2010, as Great American Cleanup, and encourages all citizens of Williamson County to join in activities that promote responsible environmental stewardship and help renew our commitment to building a better world today and for future generations. And it's signed by Mayor Rogers Anderson and me as a member of the Keep Williamson Beautiful Board. It is to be presented to Louis Bumpus, our Solid Waste Director, with appreciation to Joanne Jackson and all the members of the board, Karen McPee, and all the members have worked very diligently at this. Thank you, Louis.
Thank you. Moving on to Report of County Officers, Mayor Anderson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll let David give the financial side of it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we only have two reports for you tonight. As you may recall, we kind of hurried up and gave you the December report last month, so we'd have a six-month look at the finances. So being this early in the month, January is not ready yet. But we did place at your desk today, I believe, a copy of the January Privilege Tax, which we were able to get ready for tonight. You can see that it's kind of following the same line that we've been on for the last several months. No real change in that trend at this point. And I think you have the graph there that indicates it also. Then the other report that should have been in your packet today is the monthly report of December from the Cool Springs Conference Center, which shows that Williamson County received a check of $29,329. That's all we have tonight, Mr. Chairman, if there's any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Coleman? Thank you. I see none. Mayor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My comments will be very quick also. A week before last, when we had the snow, I'd like to give a tip of the hat to certainly Eddie Hood and all of his men and the women that worked to get our roads salted and get them operational as soon as we possibly could during that event. And it was also on that early part of that week when the schools were attempting to get open, to get the children back in schools, that Mike Looney called me and asked if we would help him with some of the school sites, and he had twelve or fifteen school sites that parking lots needed to be paved. He wrote a letter and thanked me, but the real credit goes to two phone calls that I made, one to Eddie Hood again to get the scrapers out on the parking lot, something we haven't done in a long, long time. We haven't had this kind of weather. But Eddie jumped right on it and sent some men out the following day and got the schools cleared, and I appreciate that very much. Likewise, second phone call was made to the sheriff in that we asked Jeff if he would send some of our weekend people out and help clear up some of the sidewalks and some of the things that they do. And so it was really two phone calls. And although I may have gotten the letter from Mike Looney saying thank you, the real effort and the real work and the dedication and then the cooperation that goes on with this county and all departments with, in this particular instance, was the sheriff and to our Highway Superintendent Eddie Hood. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Hood. Great job, a great team effort, because I saw you folks all over the county, and Sheriff for your folks right as well, patrolling the streets. I know Friday was a very difficult day for you, because I know you were out late that night handling traffic and accidents, so certainly thank you for your support. Williamson County Schools Director, Mike Looney.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the body. I have no resolution to offer you tonight, so I just stand here before you to express my gratitude to this body and once again to the mayor and his staff for the support. We do have Carol Birdsong on standby tonight, just in case, but we're hoping that it will start raining. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions of Dr. Looney? I see none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Any other committee wishing to report tonight to the County Commission? Commissioner Hayes, your recognize, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge to Mayor Anderson and to this body that after our discussion last month about the Build America Recovery Bonds, there was some discussion about whether Spring Hill was interested or not. We believe that they were, and we have confirmed that they definitely are interested, and they are working tonight at a work session to identify that they will continue to work and get something definitely for us by next week. And if I might read a portion of this, Mr. Chairman, it's a letter to me, and he says that they are planning the infrastructure development based on existing and future needs. They have, the current five-year capital improvement plan includes water and wastewater projects totaling over $20 million. In addition to those, the city needs to address other transportation issues as part of the overall plan toward local economic recovery. Having they referenced the mayor's letter as of August, and it says that they are formally, have formally requested access to the recovery zone economic development bonds for partial financing of these projects. It is of continued interest of the City of Spring Hill to submit an application utilizing these funds for economic recovery. The Board of Mayor and Alderman meet Monday, February 8 to discuss the appropriate and preferred projects, and then we'll meet on Tuesday, February 16 to vote on a resolution affirming such. So I just wanted this body to know that Spring Hill is definitely interested, and we will be getting their resolution of endorsement with identifying the projects. They're very appreciative of our concern, very appreciative of our work with recovery bonds. And I will submit a letter, Mr. Chairman, I've given you a letter, I've given the mayor a letter, I'll submit one for the minutes, if I may.
Okay, well, I have a copy here, and Madam Clerk, you can have this copy and enter that into the record.
This was signed, by the way, by Mayor Dinwiddie.
Thank you. Anything else? Commissioner Mills, please.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I know everybody's read this, but I just want to call your attention to the Williamson County Health Department report. And if you turn to the second page, you see the Health Council's initiative, and this is Walk Across Williamson. Now, this is a good way, and I'm not saying anybody's fatty or anything, but this is a good way for you to lose weight and to help with this project that we are doing. And it's called Walk Across Williamson. We missed the first month, but it's coming up. So please read that and be sure that you, come on out to the schools, to the parks and everything.
Walk very carefully tonight. Okay, anything else we're needing to report from the committees? Anybody wishing to make any comments? Moving on then to the elections and appointments. The County Commission Appointment to the Agricultural Committee, term expiring January of 11. The farmer position, Ralph Meacham, replacing Ralph Meacham, Dan Bond. They'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Hayes, Commissioner, who was the second? Commissioner Green, is that you? Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Library Board of Trustees, unexpired term expiring 6/12. Al Gregory Jr. being replaced by Betty Friedlander. Commissioner Barnwell, a motion. Commissioner Green II, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Notaries, each of you have received the notice of notaries that are being appointed and renewed, new and renewal as well. Will entertain a motion to accept those as presented by Mrs. Anderson in her packet. Commissioner Little, a motion. Tommy Little, a motion. Commissioner Chauvin II, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Moving on down, there is no zoning tonight. Appropriations, resolution number 210-2, resolution appropriating and amending the 2009-10 Emergency Communications Budget by $21,000 for training. Revenues to come from state grant funds. Commissioner Chauvin, please.
Move for approval.
Second by Commissioner Walton. Committee reports, let's see here. Commissioner Chauvin, that went before your committee?
Law enforcement, public safety, six in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please, Commissioner.
Again, this is grant money coming in from the state for E-911, and specifically earmarked for training.
Any questions of Commissioner Chauvin on Resolution 210-2? Seeing none. If you're in favor of this resolution, press yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted to wish to vote, please record a vote. Ms. Anderson?
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution number 210-3, resolution appropriating and amending the 2009-10 Emergency Communications Budget by $10,000. Revenues to come from state grant funds. Commissioner Chauvin, please.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Walton II, committee reports, law enforcement?
Six in favor, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Budget Committee, please. Commissioner Little?
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Chauvin.
Are these funds to assist the GEO courting coordinator with the 911 database?
Questions of Commissioner Chauvin? I see none. If you read the vote, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution number 210-4, resolution appropriating and amending the 2009-10 Williamson County Sheriff's Office Budget by $100. Revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Chauvin, please.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Mills II, law enforcement, public safety committee?
Six in favor, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Little, budget committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Explanation, Commissioner Chauvin.
This is simply to approve a donation made to the Sheriff's Department, the amount of $100 for law enforcement equipment.
Questions of Commissioner Chauvin on Resolution 210-4? I see none. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Twenty-two, yes. We adopt unanimously. Thank you very much. Resolution number 210-7, late-file resolution authorizing the appropriation amendment to the Williamson County Highway Department Budget by $500,000 for improvements to Clovercroft Road and the intersection of Clovercroft Road and Oxford-Glynn Drive. The Commissioner Para?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Tommy Little II, let's see, this is the late-file resolution. This went before the Highway Commission, and it was accepted. Mayor Anderson, five yes, zero no. Budget Committee, Commissioner Little, please.
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Para, please.
This is a continuation of other resolutions we've seen along the way the last few months here. This is the funding to improve the intersection, both for the light and also the grading of the hill. I did get an email, I don't know, several weeks ago of another accident at that intersection, so it's time to fix it. I mean, it's just, it's a dangerous intersection. We just need to protect the people in the area. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Commissioner Para on 210-7? I see none. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
We adopt unanimously. Twenty-two, yes, zero, no. Resolution number 210-8, resolution amending the 2009-10 Highway Department Budget and appropriate, and appropriate up to $100,000 for the replacement of salt. Revenues to come from unappropriated highway fund balance. Commissioner Hancock, please.
Approval?
Motions made and seconded by Commissioner Cook, motion by Commissioner Hancock. Highway Commission, this was approved unanimously, five, four, zero against. Budget Committee, Commissioner Little, please.
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Hancock.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as you all know, we've had a very hard winter, a lot of ice, a lot of sleep. They've used 1,900 tons of salt so far this year, and they need to do a reorder just in case we have some bad days in March.
Questions of Commissioner Hancock? I see none. If you're in favor of this resolution, press yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wish to vote, record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Twenty-two, yes, zero, no. We adopt unanimously. Late-file resolution number 210-10, resolution appropriating and amending the 2009-10 Emergency Communications Budget by $8,000 and authorizing the county mayor to purchase property from the state of Tennessee. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Hancock, please.
Second.
Commissioner Chauvin II, explanation, please, Commissioner Hancock.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is the highest point in the county, this site, that the county's been negotiating with the state for several years, and finally, I guess the state's, well, I don't know why the state wanted to hurry up and do it, but they got word a couple of days ago that they were ready to close the deal and they'd need $8,000 to do it. It's over off of Molly Hall, Burke Hall in that area. It's very close to where the radar station is for the, I think, Channel 4 radar.
Questions of Commissioner Hancock? I see none. In favor of this resolution, press yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wish to vote, record a vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution unanimously adopted. Under other, resolution 210-1, resolution authorizing the county clerk to enter into an amended contract with Yoast Robertson and Nowak PLLC. Let's see, Commissioner Wilson is out. Who's handling this? Resolution 210-1?
Chairman?
Yes.
This is one of the best programs we've ever done. I move for approval.
Very good. He's the second. He was the second, Commissioner Langston on the second, so certainly, let's see, that resolution went to... resolution went to the committees. Let's see here. Tax Study Committee?
Four in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Lynch, please.
What it is, we've been having a hard time with these companies. They'd move out of the county and move all that equipment, and we didn't have any way to stop them. Well, now, this year, as Mr. Yoast, he said, and he gets all this money before they leave, or else we'll put them in jail.
That makes a point.
That's kind of crude, but that's the way it works.
Any questions about this resolution? I see none. If you're in favor of 210-1, press yes button. This does require 16 votes to pass, so two-thirds majority. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Twenty-two, yes. Resolution is unanimously adopted, with the two-thirds majority required to approve unanimously. Resolution number 210-5, resolution amending the five-year capital improvements program for schools, roads, fire protection, and recreation. Commissioner Russell, little please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Mills, the second. Budget Committee report.
Five in favor, zero against.
Tax Study?
Go to Tax Study.
Explanation, Commissioner Little, please.
This is a five-year capital improvement plan. We do these every so often. It's almost, I guess, maybe an annual event. The idea behind this, and it's the law attached to us getting privileged taxes, and this is one of those things that, like Mr. Lynch said, it's kind of a crude explanation, but this gets us, this helps us get where we want, but this is not set in stone by any means of the imagination. I want to make that point, that it helps us in our thought process, but this is, like I said, especially these tricky economic times, none of this is laid down as something we have to do.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Chau Font, please.
Just wanted to make a point. The emergency management agency portion of this was brought before the law enforcement, public safety. It was an amount greater than what it's showing now, but it passed our committee, five in favor, zero, one against.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? I see none. 210-5 is on the board for adoption. If you're in favor, press yes button. Opposed, you know button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. We adopt unanimously. Twenty-two, yes, and zero, no. Resolution number 210-6, resolution endorsing the application of the Leapers Fork Community to participate in the Tennessee Downtowns Program of the Tennessee Economic and Community Development Department. Commissioners Hester and Hancock?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. We adopt this resolution. It went to Budget Committee. Budget Committee report?
Five in favor, zero against.
Property Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioners Hancock and Hester.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, enables the community of Leapers Fork to file some proposals to the Department of Economic and Community Development of the state to, for certain projects in that business and commercial area there in Leapers Fork. It's a good thing. It's, Leapers Fork is not only one that, certainly it's going to be the first one, but there's others, College Grove, there's other areas, all that in the county, that can follow suit once this is set up. These areas are very important, not only for the quality of life, but they're also important for the tax base that they generate with the commercial endeavors and other endeavors. I wholeheartedly support this and hope they're successful at getting this done.
Thank you. Commissioner Hester?
My understanding is that these communities have to be a certain age, so this is, I feel this is appropriate, and there are no local funds reflected at this time. I also recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hayes, please.
Interestingly enough, on the steering committee for our comprehensive land plan, we had villages identified. College Grove Plan has already been executed and been approved by this body as what the public wanted. The next village to be undertaken and voted in approval has been sought and received through the Planning Commission, was Leapers Fork. So this will be very appropriate, I think, that they're both working on the same project and getting more bang for the buck.
Thank you. Any other questions on this resolution? The chair would like to recognize April Cantrell, who is here tonight. April works for Charlie and Shen and Martin, the Martin Foundation. April, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Very well. Resolution 210-6, 210-6 is up for adoption. If you're in favor, press yes button. Opposed, you know button. Please record a vote.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. Resolution adopted unanimously. Twenty-two, yes, and zero, no. Resolution 210-7, resolution authorizing the appropriation and amendment to the Williamson, just in right, Williamson County Highway Department. I'm on the wrong line on it.
Number nine.
Late filed, 210-9, excuse me, 210-9, resolution to permit the serving of alcoholic beverages at the Agricultural Exposition Center for an event of the Nashville Kennel Club. Commissioner Cook is recognized.
Move for approval.
Second.
This resolution is presented for adoption. Let's see, Commissioner Cook, explanation, please.
The Nashville Kennel Club, every year for, Kenny, how many years now have they been doing this?
Eight.
Eight years. Use the Agricultural Exposition Center to have their show, and they, and it's going to be March 11 through the 14. And they have an opening day hospitality room, and we've been doing this forever. And I need to apologize because I let it slip, and it did not go through any committees. And if we waited till next month to go through committees, it would be two days before the event.
Well, you have every reason, because you were ill during a period of time, so certainly we understand that. Any other discussion or question on 210-9? I see none. If you're in favor of resolution 210-9, press yes button. Opposed, you know button. If everybody voted, wish to vote? Record a vote, please.
Seventeen, yes. Two abstain. Three, no.
Seventeen, two, and three. Resolution is adopted. Any other announcements or questions that completes our agenda tonight? We would encourage each of you to be very careful as you drive home. Let's see, anybody, Commissioner Hayes, you wanted to make an announcement, please?
I should have mentioned this early on, but I would appreciate if Kenny Wallace would identify what we have exciting going on at Ag Park in the way of a wrestling tournament. This is something that's going to be great for our whole area, and he was instrumental along with the mayor's office in getting that, and that's going to bring in a whole bunch of people to send money in our area.
With us looking ready, go. Kenny, you want to say anything?
We're just seeing if the Ag Park, Kenny's other field tournaments had ended up on Saturday night. We waited to see for the facility, the economic impact was huge. Over 500 hotel rooms, and I encourage you to come out this weekend, but the next weekend we'll have that, the end vehicle tournament, which is typically called the traditional tournament. It's been held over 30 years in Chattanooga. It's coming to Ag Expo Park too, and talked to T double A, S double A this morning, and I want to come back.
Good.
Good.
Good, good. Commissioner Green, glad to see you with us tonight.
Well, I'm glad to be back, and I would thank everybody for their prayers and concerns. And I'm doing fine. I'm, got a little speech, speech therapy session tomorrow, and I'll be all right.
Great to see you out. Commissioner Lynch, always a pleasure to see you out and about. Any other announcements before we leave? Because I said, be careful driving, the snow continues to fall.
[inaudible].
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.